Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight's meeting of the Plymouth Select Board is taking place in a hybrid format. Members of the board are going to be joining us in person here at Town Hall in the Great Hall. Members of the board may be joining us virtually over the Zoom webinar platform. We also may be joined by members of the public over the Zoom webinar platform. This is being presented in that hybrid format consistent with changes made to the open meeting law by the legislature of the Commonwealth. And members of the public that wish to participate in this meeting may join us here at Town Hall or they may join us over the Zoom webinar platform, the login information for which is posted on the agenda that is on the Town website. Members of the public and the community are also reminded that consistent with Massachusetts general laws, any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting of the Select Board after notifying the Chair subject to reasonable requirements of the Chair, says to not interfere with the conduct of the meeting. At the beginning of the meeting, the Chair shall inform other attendees of any recordings. We are aware of a recording being made by the local scene. We are not aware of any other recordings being made at this time. Mr. Chairman, if there's no other business, I would read the executive session language.
Please.
The Select Board will hold an executive session pursuant to Massachusetts general laws, Chapter 30a, Section 21a, Clause 4, to discuss the deployment of security personnel or devices or strategies with respect thereto. This is in relation to public events and celebrations. I would make a motion that we enter into executive session at this time to return at approximately 6:00 p.m. into open session. Second?
Motion by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Golden. Discussion, Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
And myself, yes, the board should be returning approximately 6:00 p.m. for a joint meeting with the planning board to open. Thank you.
January seventh, two thousand and twenty five. It's a joint meeting tonight with the planning board. Mr. Chairman, would you like to open your?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It being six oh seven and a quorum is present, the special meeting of the planning board for January seventh, two thousand and twenty five is also in order.
Thank you. First order of business is a public hearing. That's it. Oh, we did it. You want to do it? Yes. Please join us in a pledge to the flag.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, so we have a public hearing from a seasonal alcohol license for the Pillary Pub, seventy-two Water Street, John Sheehan manager.
Can you re-read it, Ken?
Yeah.
Thank you. Ten minutes back.
In accordance with chapter one thirty-eight of the Massachusetts General Laws as amended, notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held at the Plymouth Town Hall, twenty-sixth Court Street, on Tuesday, January seventh, two thousand and twenty five, at six P. M. to consider the application for a change of class from a seasonal all alcohol license to an annual all alcohol restaurant license from Pillary Pub, L. L. C., doing business as Pillary Pub, seventy-two Water Street, John Sheehan manager. Description of premises is as follows: approximately eight hundred and sixty-four square feet, which includes a dining area, bar, kitchen, utility room, and restrooms.
Thank you. I now declare the hearing open. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this application? Anyone online? No? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Bring it back to the board for the wish. Yeah? Thank you. Motion by Mr. Blitzer, second by Mr. Golden. Seeing none. Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Golden?
Yes.
And Mr. Blitzer? I'm just getting used to sticking to the right here. It's a little confusing. We have other licenses: Stack Sports, Change Manager, John Alden, Red Robin. Any questions on those? Two are surrendering their licenses in for two thousand and twenty-five, and just in case anyone doesn't know, you're supposed to be pulling them in and turning them in. That's why they're listed. And there's another one. Vote for seasonal population. Any questions or comments on those?
Anybody here from the John Alden?
Yes.
Judy, can you come up? I'm not trying to embarrass you, but I'm kind of congratulating you. Aren't you, are you the first female manager?
Yes, I am.
I mean, it was, when I first joined, I don't think there was females allowed in there, so.
No.
So you've come a long way, and I think that's great.
Thank you.
Yeah, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's a great club.
It is, definitely.
I haven't been in a while, but it is a great club. So anyway, good luck.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Wish of the board? We take these all at once, Derek?
Motion to move.
I said motion to move all at once.
The microphone.
Motion to approve all licenses.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Blitzer.
Blitzer, second by Mr. Golden. Discussion? Mr. Blitzer?
Yes.
Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
And myself, yes, unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Article twenty-four. Amendment Land Use and Acquisition Committee. Please identify yourself for the record and make sure the green light's on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I'm Hampton Watkins. I'm the chair of the Land Use and Acquisition Committee. Earlier this year, we were asked to, a little history, land use and acquisition has historically, under the charter, provided advice to the select board with regard to chapter sixty-one properties. Earlier this year, there was a property that was not a chapter sixty-one, but the town manager asked that we look into the property. I indicated that it's outside of our scope, but we would do so in an informal manner. What we did as a result of that was seek, working with the Charter Review Committee, the opportunity to expand the role of the committee, work through language, Mr. Bulletin was most helpful, and submitted a memo to Mr. Brindisi, and as a result of that, we have an article twenty-four to expand the role of the committee to include non-chapter sixty-one properties and further the acquisition, conveyance, and disposition of those properties, and provide advice to the select board as requested. So that's the general scope of what we're proposing.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board? Comments? Wish of the board?
Question. Mr. Canty?
So would there be, do you envision any focus with this? I mean, it's a broader mandate, so by leaps and bounds.
Right. What, I'll give you the specific example. The property on the corner of South Street and Leland Way is owned by the Library Foundation. The Library Foundation was approached by an individual in the neighborhood with an interest in acquiring the parcel. The Library Foundation came to the town and said, is the town interested? Is this, you know, rather than, and so we investigated it, spoke with the Library Foundation board members, and returned a note to Mr. Brindisi that that was the sort of thing that we would be comfortable with, but more comfortable if the role was expanded. There are literally hundreds and hundreds of parcels in town that we might have the opportunity to look at over the next several years for disposition, conveyance, whether it goes to the water commissioners or to conservation. It is something that I think that we can work in cooperation, coordination with other town committees, for example, open space, affordable housing, to make sure that we have the bases covered and a broad input of information to you so that you can make decisions that are in the best interest of the town without burdening the staff here and yourselves with doing investigation.
And that's, so you'd stick with looking at chapter sixty-one, sixty-one A, sixty-one B, as it came up, but the other conveyances would be upon request of the town manager?
Town manager and you all.
Okay, so if we, like when we sold, for example, the school administration building, if no one had asked Luac to look at that from the fourth floor, you wouldn't have, but if that was asked, you would, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Make a motion that we include article twenty-four on the town meeting warrant and recommend it, that town meeting approve it.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Golden.
Discussion? Mr. Blitzer?
Yes.
Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
And myself, yes, unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Okay, we're going to go out of order here a little bit and get right into the planning board candidates, questions, and nominations, and all that good stuff. So at this time, Mr. Bulletin, I'd like to turn it over to you since it's your board, and let's see, lay some general rules out and move it right along.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we have nine applicants tonight for officially the position being the open full seat of the planning board. That position will remain filled by the person designated until the next town election. We also have an open associate member, also called alternate member seat. That's a one-year seat that's determined solely by the members of the planning board. So for all applicants who are coming forward, what I'd like to do is I'd like to have you come to the podium. I'll give you a couple of minutes, two minutes, just very briefly, to introduce yourself, why, you know, who you are, why you'd like to be appointed to the position, after which there are going to be questions asked. Now, we have questions that are going to be asked, the same questions of every candidate, after which that will be open again to any additional questioning based upon perhaps what somebody has said. I'd also like each candidate who comes forward to indicate whether or not they would be willing to serve in the associate position if they were so appointed. So with that, I'm going to go in the order that it, I believe the order is the order that the applications came into the town, so there's, this was random. The first person is Joseph Higgins.
We've, someone left their phone up here.
Thank you, sir. First of all, I've got a phone. What's next, Ray?
Good evening, Mr.
You must be streaming, could you call that one?
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair. First and foremost, I want to thank you for this opportunity. My name is Joseph Higgins, and I want to thank you again for your consideration. I cannot, nor will I, stand before you tonight and pretend that I'm an expert on all issues or situations that will be presented to the planning board. The truth is, I'm not, but I can say with confidence that through my education and professional experience, I've developed the skills that can serve this community well as a member of the planning board. I'm a good listener and a very quick learner. As a criminal prosecutor and now as a defense attorney, I've been called upon to advance arguments that I don't necessarily agree with on a personal level, but my job requires me to. Over the last fifteen years, I believe I have developed the skills necessary to remove personal beliefs from situations that require adherence to rules and/or regulations, as hard as it may be sometimes. To put it in baseball terms, I can call a ball a ball and a strike a strike. If appointed, I view this as an opportunity to advance the wishes of my fellow Plymouthians, as an opportunity to be someone in this town that people can approach and express their thoughts and concerns. I want to be very clear, I am not seeking this appointment for personal benefit. I have no agenda. From a very young age, I was interested in serving my community, whatever community that may have been. In elementary school, it was student council. In high school, it was student government. In college, I was a member of my various house councils and the various dormitories I lived in. I'm seeking this appointment with an understanding that the position comes with an obligation to the community as a whole and the fellow residents of Plymouth. I recognize I will be called upon to make decisions, again, that I don't personally agree with all the time, but that rules or regulations require me to make certain decisions. I believe, again, my experience as a prosecutor and now as a defense attorney have served me well, and I hope I can serve my community as a result. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Higgins. So, Mr. Higgins, if you were to be appointed to this position, what is one thing that the planning board is currently doing that you'd like to see them continue doing, or one thing they're not currently doing that you would like to see them start doing?
Mr. Bulletin, can you just repeat that one time for me, please?
Sure. In simple terms, is there something the planning board is doing now that you would want to support, or is there something that we're not doing that you think we should start doing?
Well, I know that the planning board has been engaging the various steering committees throughout the town, and I think that's important. And so I would like to see that continue. I would like to see that grow. I think it's important to hear those voices, and I think it allows for more informed and better decision-making. So to answer your question, I would like to see more involvement from the steering committees, if that makes sense.
What, if any, changes would you suggest to the town's zoning bylaws? What zoning changes do you think the town should be engaging or at least looking into?
I think changes need to be made to the bylaws on a commercial level. I think we need to change the bylaws that encourage commercial development, and so I would like to see that change.
What steps would you take as a planning board member to ensure that the community has a sustainable and secure water supply?
Sustainable and secure water supply? Frankly, that's a pretty loaded question there, Mr. Bulletin, and I can't say that I have a concrete answer for that. What I will say is I think it would have to be viewed on a case-by-case or project- or project-by-project basis. I think you would have to look at how the proposed project would actually impact the water supply and be able to make informed decisions. But I can't say that I, there's a blanket policy that I would endorse.
What is your perspective on the role of gravel removal in site preparation for economic development projects?
Well, I'm in favor of it if it makes sense, okay? I'm not in favor of gravel or sand mining or excessive gravel removal. But if it makes sense for a particular project, and when I say makes sense, it's being done for the right reasons, then I would, I would say that that's the role I envision.
And how do you believe the town can increase commercial tax revenue through development? And how can we accomplish that without compromising the integrity of our environment?
I think it goes back to what I said before, Mr. Bulletin, about changing the bylaws to encourage commercial development. I think that's, by changing the bylaws, encourage commercial development, take the burden off the residential tax basis to increase or promote the commercial tax base.
Thank you. At this point, I'm going to open the floor up to any further questions from either board. Does anyone from either board have any questions for the candidate? Seeing none, I'm gonna just ask one question, which is, I will ask the same question of every candidate too, so everybody else can read, it's very simple. Based upon your occupation or other connections, do you see as a general instance circumstances where you're going to have conflicts if you were to sit on the board?
I'm sure that situation would arise, but if there is a conflict, I know that I have the obligation to recuse myself. And, but, I think I have the ability to recognize when the conflict presents and act accordingly.
But I guess the question is, based upon, for example, your profession, you're an attorney, but you're serving as an attorney in a criminal defense capacity at this point. Do you see from your professional circumstances a likelihood of a repeated issue with conflicts?
Oh, certainly not, no, no. I wasn't clear on the question, Mr. Bulletin, thank you.
That's why I wanted to clarify the question. Again, I want, everybody's the same thing. It is always understood that anybody can always have, a neighbor can always show up in front of the board.
Sure.
And that's a conflict, we all know that. Nobody can anticipate that, but as a general matter-
I don't see it being a regular thing, sir.
Okay. Well, Mr. Higgins, thank you very much for, for coming up, we appreciate it, thank you for coming.
Mr. Blitzer.
Mr. Blitzer, yes, please.
Yeah, Mr. Higgins, thank you for your frankness in the beginning that you, you know, you don't really experience. But you're, obviously you're a lawyer, so you're very intelligent, and you've had to do a lot of studying in your time. As a member of the, the planning board, you're gonna have projects coming before you for approval or disapproval. And you're gonna get a package, every week you'll be getting a package of materials on these projects. Do you have time and will you prepare yourself so you will have the knowledge to make educated decisions on these projects?
To answer your question, yes. I'm confident that I will be prepared. Something I take very seriously is, in my practice of law, is appearing before judges across this Commonwealth. And I, I will say I've appeared in over 60 courts here in Massachusetts, and I think I've developed a reputation for preparedness.
Being in the court system myself, come and be, and when you come to the planning board, whether you're either side, it should be like preparing for a trial. You should be prepared to present, and as a planning board member, you have to be, be prepared to listen and, and you have to know ahead, you know, get all the information you can on, on some of the legalities on, on that project. And so, and you're confident that you, you'll be able to have that time, you'll commit to that.
I am, Mr. Blitzer.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
One last question from me first is, would you be willing to serve as the alternate if you weren't appointed for the full position?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you again for your time and consideration.
Next on our agenda, we have Dominic LaBelle. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and to the rest of the board and members of the public here tonight. Wanted to start by thanking everyone for the time and consideration. I had seen in an article in the fall that there was an opening on the planning board, and frankly, thought to myself that that was a shame because planning board is one of the unique positions that has a real important role in guiding a community and stewarding its future. And so to me, the same day I saw that article, I filled out and submitted an application. I have a great admiration for those who are willing to spend their time on nights like these or at other select zoning or planning board meetings in order to fulfill what I view as a civic duty. I think civil certain, civil servants are incredibly important to the functioning of government and to the functioning of communities. I, as a kid, worked for my grandfather's small business, intimately familiar with how local ordinances and regulations can impact both local businesses and also impact the residents of those communities and their families. I, in college, joined my student senate group, got involved in local politics in the other Plymouth, up in Plymouth, New Hampshire. Don't hold it against me that I spent time in the other one. But have always had a real deep respect and admiration for those who get involved and are willing to spend their time. And so with that, I'd just like to thank you all for considering me. I've spent a lot of time in front of boards like these in my career. I work in utility-scale energy development, although, to be clear, I don't, do not have any projects in Plymouth, Massachusetts, or nearby communities here. But as part of that work, I've spent a number of nights applying to and speaking on behalf of projects to planning boards, zoning boards, and select boards. I'm able to and excited about following the rules and regulations and how those boards are meant to function and how discussions are required to proceed. And would be very excited to get the opportunity to join the planning board here and contribute to the stewardship of my community.
Well, thank you. So again, if you were to be appointed to this position, what is one thing that the planning board is doing currently that you'd like to see them continue to do? Or one thing that they're currently doing that you, not doing, that you'd like to see them start?
Yeah, I think I would go with the former of those two options. I really appreciated that the planning board, particularly in recent months, hosted a public hearing regarding an application for which a public hearing was not required. I thought it was wonderful that you all took the time to hear the community out, to receive public input, and to get that feedback from the community on the application down in Cedarville just recently at the December meeting. I thought that was really great, and frankly, I'd like to see the planning board continue that sort of activity. I think as a board that is meant to be representative of the public and to guide this community forward, we should always seek out the input of our community.
Thank you. What, if any, changes would you suggest to the town's zoning bylaw?
Yeah, well, as I mentioned, working in renewable energy development, I was quite pleased to see that the town of Plymouth does not require a zoning application for rooftop solar. I think that we should further explore within our zoning codes and ordinances how to encourage renewable energy development and how to encourage that development in a responsible manner, you know, respecting other folks' view sheds, respecting setbacks to neighboring communities or to neighboring residences.
And what steps would you take as a planning board member to ensure that the community has a sustainable and secure source of water?
Yeah, I'm on well water myself, so that is one that is near and dear to my heart and is going to be important to me as a resident of the town of Plymouth. My wife and I and our two dogs and hopefully kids in the, in the near future will certainly be focused on that. I think that any time where it is able to be a requirement of an applicant to provide hydrological studies or analysis, I think that we should have that as a requirement, recognizing that perhaps not all forms of development should be given that. If it is going to be an owner's requirement financially for, you know, certain smaller developments or hydrological impacts would not be expected. But I think reviewing those studies and analysis by professionals is a really important part of the process and something that, particularly for larger developments, the planning board should be keeping a close eye on.
And what is your perspective on the role of gravel removal in site preparation for economic development projects?
I think it's an unfortunate necessity for, in order for humans, communities, towns to prosper. We must continue to advance ourselves from a business perspective. You know, the population is continuing to increase. As that happens, there are going, there is going to be a need for future development in town. And frequently, when development is required, there is gonna be sand and gravel removal required. I think it's an unfortunate necessity, but one that should be weighed carefully and when done responsibly is something that I think is okay.
And how do you believe the town can increase its commercial tax revenue through development without compromising the integrity of our environment?
Yeah. I think it's always about trying to weigh those two factors, and that's something that I've experienced a lot in my professional life. You know, when we propose certain large, larger renewable energy projects in communities, we get feedback sometimes from residents who are going to live nearby or from businesses that'll be located near those projects. And I think that as a planning board, what I would seek to encourage is that for proposed developments, they go to the community early and often. They seek community feedback, and when possible, try to incorporate it in design. Try to make certain that you are giving, you know, a little bit of deference and respect to the community and making certain that, to the greatest extent practicable, you work with those local folks, you work with the people who will be near a development. And I think as a member of the planning board, I would strongly encourage anyone who comes to me with an application or seeks advice on successfully, you know, shepherding themselves through the planning process. I would ask that they host community meetings, door knock for neighbors. That's something I've myself done quite a bit of and find is a very effective way to get a project moving forward in, in a way that the community can support.
Thank you. And would you be interested in the associate position if not appointed to the full position?
Yes, sir.
This point, again, open to both boards, questions, anyone? So I'll ask, again, my question, given your occupation, and I know that as you've described it in your application materials, you were involved in land use, land acquisition. I know you've mentioned that you don't have any projects currently in the area. Is that likely to be a concern in the future?
I don't view it as likely to be a concern. Certainly to the extent that a company that I work for or have worked for in the past were to ever propose a project in the area, I would quickly recuse myself.
Okay. One other thing, I noted in, in the applications that we received, one of the questions that's asked about is prior town service. And you're new, and that's not a disqualifying factor by any question. But along the lines of Mr. Blitzer's question, have you contacted anyone from either of the boards or the planning department to see what type of planning packet or documentation you'd be required to review and prepare for in advance for each of the meetings?
I've not reached out to anyone to that effect. I have, however, attended a planning board meeting, and I read through the planning board packet prior to doing so. I was at the meeting back in December and reviewed the packet prior to going to try to get a sense. I did get the sense that that was a particularly active and busy meeting in December. And I suppose we'd be hopeful that future packets and, and meetings might be a touch less contentious. But yes, I'm very familiar with the amount of work that it takes going into a meeting to make sure that you understand a development as somebody who's written applications to planning boards in the past.
Great, Ken, any further questions, anyone? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda this evening is Delia Burns.
Hello, it's nice to see you all.
Good evening, thank you for coming.
Thank you for pronouncing my name right. I'm so excited to be here. You're likely thinking that I'm young and a little unusual looking, but people my age need to be getting involved with our town instead of complaining fruitlessly. When I applied, rushing to do so after reading about the vacancy in the Plymouth Independent, I did not necessarily think I would be elected. I did think, well, as long as you need someone to apply, why not me? I care deeply about this area, and I love Plymouth. I want only good things for her. I live in town, my husband works in the trades around the shore while I work from home, although we can still barely afford to live here. But we've been welcomed by this beautiful town and want to give back. For my qualifications, I am a certified librarian who is used to parsing through large amounts of information, and frankly, I love it. You can trust I don't have ulterior motives. I'm not working for a company interested in expanding here. I'm only representing myself and how much I want Plymouth to grow without losing her charm. We're all thinking, what do we want Plymouth to be in the future and whose hands do we want her to be in? I will understand not being elected, but I would regret it if I didn't apply. And if I'm not elected, I will go out to get more experience and then I will be back. Thank you for your time.
Would you be interested in the alternate position?
Yes.
Okay. So, on to the questions. If you were to be appointed, what is one thing that the planning board is currently doing that you'd like to see them continue doing? Or one thing they're not currently doing that you'd like to see them start doing?
So I've recently looked into your master plan regarding climate resilience in the area, which is something I care deeply about. I want to have kids in a few years. I'm thinking about who I'm going to be raising in this area, how I'm taking care of them, and keeping it beautiful and keeping it safe is very important to me.
And is that something that you feel the planning board is doing or is not doing?
Is doing, I apologize, I should have clarified. Yes, I feel the planning board is focusing on climate resilience. I saw a lot about that, and I've been reading various bylaws, various zoning articles, and I like what we've done with places around the area. I know we're working on Jenny Pond right now, so I'm very excited.
And what, if any, changes would you suggest to the town's zoning bylaws?
I know that we're currently very invested in commercial places in the area. I've noticed that there's a few places downtown that are still empty, and that seems very crazy to me in a town where every time I go out, streets are full, parking is impossible. So I'm wondering what our zoning bylaws are for commercial projects. I have to confess, I don't know as much as I would like, but I would, I'm very interested in getting more businesses in downtown than we already have.
And what steps would you take as a planning board member to ensure that the community has a secure and sustainable water supply?
I know that right now there's concerns about the sand mining operations and its impact on our water supply. I, I've seen that there's a little bit of a kerfluffle going on around it in town, and I want to know, I want to know more. I want to have more information for what that is going to do to impact our water supply. Plymouth is also very old. I like her focus on climate understanding and having pure water, but with all the building that's going on right now, we are really putting a strain on our water, and we only have one aquifier, so that is something that we need to be more aware of as the future continues.
Okay, and, well, what is your perspective on that kerfuffle? Okay, and well, what is your perspective on that kerfuffle when it comes to the role of gravel removal in site preparation for economic development?
I think it's necessary. I mean, people need to eat, people need to make money. So while I don't love it and it's not something that I'm thrilled about, I also understand that it can all be sunshine and rainbows when it comes to town. We have to understand that there's going to have to be hard choices made. It's a very, obviously the sand mining and the gravel mining is very important in our community. I mean, you can see it from the highway, you can see how much is going on. So it's something that is still necessary and it's still going to be needed. We just need to think about it carefully and be as, be as safe as we can be.
And how do you believe that the town can increase its commercial tax revenue through development, that commercial development you've talked about, without compromising the integrity of our environment?
Well, I know right now there's a lot of commotion over Shaws or what used to be Shaws, I believe it's called, no, what was it called? I'm sorry, I'm still a little new to town. There's a place next to Peopies and I know that we're, we're trying to find something to put in there. I know that there's been talk of having a train line coming down to Plymouth, which quite frankly, I don't think will ever happen, but I want to build on places that are already there rather than trying to create new places where someone doesn't want it, you know, in neighborhoods, residential, we want to keep those separate, but there's places in town where we can expand rather than having to create new, new buildings.
Great, thanks very much. Again, opening it up to both boards, Mr. Canty.
If you were appointed to the full position that expires in May, do you anticipate you would run in the May election for a longer term?
I would attempt to. I did run for the seventeen forty-nine Plymouth Museum Committee last year and I did get on and I did really enjoy what I was doing there, although of course, this is a little bit more intense, but the committee has now been turned into a task, task force. So while I still participate and am creating a display for the museum, I no longer am on a committee and would like to be so again, as participating in town is important to me. So yes.
But you understand that that committee is an appointment, this one is an, although you, this is an appointment tonight, this is an elected position generally.
Yes, I understand.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else, either board? Seeing no one, and since I think you've answered my questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda this evening is Anatol Zuckerman.
Good evening, Mr. Chairmans, to Chairman of the Select Board and the Planning Board and the beautiful audience here. I am a retired architect and I wish to apply for a position as planning board member. I lived in Plymouth for eleven years. Below is a short list of my architectural, environmental and town planning activities related to Plymouth. Currently working with Plymouth's Climate Action Net Zero and Master Plan Proposal. Worked with the community and town administration to promote the stretch code approved in twenty twenty. Member of Plymouth Energy Committee, two thousand sixteen, two thousand nineteen. Installed solar panels on my house, two thousand fourteen. Worked and amending, worked on amending Massachusetts Solar Access Law with the state representative, representative moratorium, currently still under study. Plymouth's Energy Efficient Construction Propose to Planning Board and Planning Department in two thousand fifteen, proposed again to Energy Committee in two thousand twenty. Created a citizens petition to replace trees that are lost to construction in two thousand sixteen. Designed ten minute village, ten minute village concept, proposed to the planning board and Board of Select in two thousand seventeen. Created citizens petition to create a, designed petition to create a mixed use zone around the prestige way.
Mr. Zuckerman.
In North Plymouth in two thousand nineteen.
Mr. Zuckerman, we do have that lit, we do have that list, so if you want to say something more beyond what's in your application.
Beyond the list, okay, fine.
Well, we have, we have, we have the list in your application, so I don't want you to just.
Yeah, you're aware of that, I hope.
So we're, so yeah, so we are aware of all the things that you have worked on and proposed, so is there, there's something more that you want to say before we get to the questions?
I would like to add to this, the, to quote the planning board mission statement, quote, "The planning board is responsible for the review of land division as well as review of specific development proposals," end of quote. This review should include the optimal land use, architectural, engineering, energy, aesthetic and environmental features of every proposal. In addition to zoning and economic issues, currently, no agency of this town reviews these important issues. One of the goals by Plymouth Select Board is to, quote, "Develop sustainable construction standard policy for future municipal buildings and retrofit of existing buildings," end of quote. As a retired nationally registered architect and a former member of American Institute of Architects, I am uniquely qualified for this job. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you were not appointed to the full position, would you be interested in the alternate position?
Yes, I do.
So if you were to be appointed to the full position, what is one thing that the planning board is currently doing that you'd like to see them continue doing or one thing that they're not doing that you would like to see them start doing?
I would like the board to reduce the single family subdivision and increase the multi-family middle, mid rise projects.
Okay.
For one.
Okay, well, I think you've just answered the second question too, which is what changes, if any, would you make to the town zoning bylaw? I think you, you just answered that question as well. Is there any other change beside changing housing zoning with respect to single family and multifamily that you would like to, that you would recommend? Any other zoning bylaw change?
Yes, I, I would like to propose, as I wrote before, to build on already disturbed land instead of cutting trees for new developments. I proved that the four story construction takes three times less land than a single family construction.
Okay. What steps would you take as a planning board member to ensure that the community has a sustainable and secure water supply?
Say again?
What would you do to ensure that the community has a sustainable and secure water supply?
Water supply, of course. First of all, stop, start reducing the water usage, all right? As we know, the huge water waste is, is on our golf courses. In addition, every household usually uses too, too much water that is wasted into a storm surge.
Okay, and what is your perspective on the role of gravel removal in site preparation for economic development projects?
Okay, because my development project will come when the town starts building for working families and younger families, so-called workforce housing that was proposed by governor, by Picker. As you know, the town of Plymouth is turning into a bedroom town for the, for the well see retired and that is a problem for the new development for the new commercial projects.
And how do you believe that the town could increase its commercial tax revenue through development without compromising the integrity of our environment?
Well, again, build a compact developments as was proposed by several master plans before, since two thousand four, we had a six master plans and they repeated the same right thing, cluster housing, cluster housing, all right, okay, it's not happening. It's still building, single family developments that devour the land. So there's many other details I can tell you.
Okay, thank you very much. Questions for the board? Mr. Canty.
Mr. Zuckerman, if you were appointed to the full position, would you seek election in the May annual town election? If you were appointed to the full position, Mr. Zuckerman, would you seek to be elected for a further term in the town election this May?
I would, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Mr. Blitzer.
Yeah, hi, Mr. Zuckerman. What do you, how do you feel about the height restrictions in Plymouth? Do you think they should stay the same? Do you think they should be higher? And how do you think that would affect our economy? I'll say it again, the height restrictions in Plymouth, do you, do you think they should stay the same or do you think they should be higher? And how do you think that would affect our economy?
It would greatly affect our economy in positive, in a positive way if we had more development, but that, but that development has to do, has to conform to the state smart growth principles. Okay, we'll, we all know the smart growth principles and yet it's rarely implemented. But yes, the development, we need more development, there's no question about it. And the population of the town is rapidly growing, so we have to do something. It's inevitable to build something. All we have to do is to build smartly.
And what do you think the height should be, what's your opinion?
I would, and yes, I would propose to increase the height of the residential zones to three to four stories. And in other areas like the north Plymouth, it was approved several years ago, it was approved to six stories and that was a very good legislature. I would encourage to develop the village centers.
I'm more concerned with the, the industrial zones, like industrial zones, industrial parks.
Yes.
What height would you like to see there?
Say it again.
What height would you like to see in our industrial parks?
What height is forty feet is, is enough. Well, I would say forty-five feet because of the, those roofs are sloping and it goes to the bill, the height of the building, it goes in the, the median level of the roof.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Donaldson.
Mr. Zuckerman, I see you've had a lot of experience in the town of Newton and your application. What things do you see that are comparable that from Newton that you would want to see here?
You're better without Mike.
So you need me to repeat it? So you have a lot of experience in the town of Newton. What things do you think that you can compare with your experience in the activities in the town of Newton that you would like to see here in Plymouth or vice versa? Well, I don't, no, not vice versa, mostly about Plymouth.
To the what again?
Your experience in some of the, in some of your activities and things that you've done in Newton, is there a comparisons between Newton and Plymouth that you could bring to Plymouth in the position?
Yes, I think so. I, as I stated before, I worked many years on a certain proposal. I designed and presented ten minute village and triple deckers for the town owned land to, to solve the affordable housing. To, I worked on a energy land, fifteen hundred acres energy land. It is still under discussion and many specific issues that, that I can contribute to the work. Thank you.
Anyone else? No? Thank you, Mr. Zuckerman.
Thank you.
Next this evening, Frank Mann.
Good evening. Many of you know me, many times I've been before this board, experienced on the planning board and so I've tooted my horn many times. So I was thinking, how should I approach telling you what my qualifications are in a different way? And I think I have probably the first time and not the last time a novel approach. That is, I asked artificial intelligence. I asked a specific question of artificial intelligence chat GPT, what are Frank Mann's skills applicable to the position of planning board member in Plymouth? And AI positively responded and they said that Frank Mann possesses a diverse range of skills and experiences that make him well qualified for the position of planning board member in Plymouth. And here are a few of the key skills. I won't go into them in detail because it was several pages long, believe it or not. But it said, I have a knowledge of zoning, land use and regulations. And some of that has come through the fact that I co-manage the Barrens, a three suite Airbnb that has operated successfully for the last six years, a business in the heart of downtown Plymouth. So I'm familiar with local policies and that equips me to help evaluate planning proposals and others more effectively than I otherwise might be. It also said environmental advocacy and conservation expertise that I possessed. And as the Vice President of the Southeastern Massachusetts Pine Barrens Alliance, a nonprofit, I've demonstrated a strong commitment to sustainable development and environmental preservation. And that's also meant expertise in conservation has enabled me to assess the environmental impacts of planning decisions and advocate for responsible land use. It also suggested that my experience helps me to balance economic development and community preservation, one of the questions that you will ask later. It's given me the ability to demonstrate leadership skills and the ability to collaborate. As Vice President of a nonprofit organization, I have experienced leading initiatives and building consensus. It's also suggested from my experience that I am good at communication and advocacy. And with my background in journalism, over ten years spent covering this board and others in town, I've honed the ability to communicate complex issues clearly and effectively and that skill's valuable in articulating planning policies and engaging with the public and stakeholders. And that skill is valuable in articulating planning policies and engaging with the public and stakeholders. I'll skip over and say that in conclusion, artificial intelligence at the very least says that I have a combination of zoning knowledge, environmental advocacy, business acumen and planning board experience. And that makes me a strong candidate for this position. I'll leave that up to you, of course, and your questions.
Did artificial intelligence indicate whether or not you would be interested in serving as the associate member of the planning board?
I'd prefer the, the full time position because I'd like to get to work right away and not be waiting in the wings. And with a new member, that person would be gaining knowledge, but not necessarily practical experience, but.
Okay, so if you were to be appointed to the planning board position, what is one thing that the planning board is doing currently that you'd like to see it continue doing? Or one thing that they're not doing that you'd like to see them start doing?
Well, the master plan process has been on everyone's mind for many years. And I think we're all relieved to see that it's fully underway and moving forward. And, but that master plan process or that long term planning is something that I'd like to see becomes more integrated into what the planning board does on a regular basis. As far as maybe what they're not doing as much is, in my opinion at least, from my experience, too many things were waited, waited too long. That is, as a member of the board, I was not often privy to large scale plans or other plans that were going to come before us until they were pretty much a fait accompli. And then you found yourself having to nibble at the edges or really found it difficult to push back against a plan that been through many iterations with staff, but you had never seen before. So I'd really like, if I was a member again, to really find out from the beginning when someone came forward with a new plan or a big idea that this was happening so that on the front end, we could expect or we could suggest the expectations that the board has and not try to fight for it at the last moment.
And what if any changes would you suggest to the town zoning bylaws?
That speaks a little bit to it. One of the things I've found, and I think probably all planning board members find, is certain inexactitude, if that's a word, in the language of certain bylaws and regulations. And one of the ones that I think you would agree at least is disputed or a point of discussion is the notion of incidental as in terms of sand and gravel development and sand and gravel removal. When they describe it being incidental to a project, I think there's a lot of, too much room to maneuver there. My understanding of it is far more stringent, far less open ended. And I'd like to see that and maybe other terms more clearly defined. I think that would help the board a lot.
And what steps would you take as a planning board member to ensure that the community has a sustainable and secure water supply?
As a planning board member, I guess that's the difficult thing. You do what you can. Overall, I think the town needs to integrate issues of water protection and water retention and recharge all across the board in every instance. So that we're always considering that. Also, I'm not sure, not sure where the planning board would have this effect. But in terms of conservation issues, I really think the town needs to, and as a planning board member, I would at least argue for a greater conservation of water, more, more effort to conserve on the front end and not be looking to retain on the back end.
What is your perspective on the role of gravel removal and site preparation for economic development projects?
I've kind of implied that is that I think that in most instances, we've been giving away too much sand and gravel for two, for specious reasons. That it really is not justified, except when it truly is to fulfill the needs of a specific plan, not an argument for how it might be applicable or, or somebody else's argument. I don't want to raise specific issues about places, but in most instances, you've had the experience recently, the, the Landers project, the, you know, I don't know, twenty seven acres or was it less of bog? And how much it could generate in revenue? And supposedly they needed millions of sand and gravel. And it was clearly not a successful argument, but I think that argument has also been made on many other levels and many other developments and we need to address that. So I would change that attitude about how we define that and again, the term incidental.
And how do you believe the town can increase commercial tax revenue through development without compromising the integrity of our environment?
Here I would argue with the basis of that question in that economic, what are we talking about when we're saying economic development? We're really saying revenue, commercial revenue that can help to balance the books, help the town go forward. And the argument is that, or the, the assumption is that open space does not do that. In fact, open space, in my opinion, done the proper way, as the Fats proposal for the Pine Hills suggests. Sorry, I'm getting dry mouth. Could truly be an economic engine. It's like the blue economy. I consider the green economy the same thing. If we truly embraced our environmental legacy here and had more bike paths and more unified trails, we would be a destination. We already to a degree are, but we could truly be a destination. And so we'd have passive use, revenue and little infrastructure and the costs associated with it. So I would say that embracing our environmental legacy and doing everything we can to enhance it would actually be an economic engine.
Okay, thank you. Opening it up to the two boards.
Got a bottle of water.
Hi Frank, thank you.
If there's a cup, this is, I can sort of a cup.
So A1 has already, artificial intelligence has already told us about your environmental accomplishments. And I appreciate that, I really do, I respect you for that. If I asked A, A, artificial intelligence, if you've helped us or how you've helped us to create commercial tax revenue. As you know, we, taxes keep going up and up. What would A1 tell me you've done for, to help with our commercial tax revenue?
Well, I've never worked in that area per se, but I have contributed taxes as a business owner downtown, as you do and others do. And we pay additional tax for our Airbnb, which we run successfully year round. I would say that the maintenance and care that we've shown for the building we leased from the town, the town was going to knock over probably a beautiful building down at Center Hill. The town came to us and said, would you like to lease that building? We did so. And we've had a, a, a good showing of turning it into a conservation center, but we've also had to do a lot of maintenance, do a lot of repair, do a lot of renovation. We've raised money from the state and other sources and grants to put in two new heat pumps down there. We've put in a special lighting system, a digital, cross effective lighting systems. We've rebuilt the decks and restained them with sweat equity. And we've turned the place into a place where a lot of meetings happen on a regular basis, thereby being a kind of a tourist attraction. And therefore generating revenue and interest and increasing property values in that part of town, which is in the past, one of the reasons that that building was available to us is too far away from the downtown. But we've done all those, all those, those things on our own for the sake of the community. We also have raised, won several grants that have put other people to work. We, we get grants and we never, as a, that is the Pine Bear Alliance, the nonprofit I work for, and don't get any revenue from our salary. We've brought in hundreds of thousands of dollars in grants and given it to other people. We've given it to Manomet and Mass Autobon and DCR and other people and UMass Amherst so that they can do work and studies and pay other people salaries as well. So, excuse me for being so dry mouth, but I think that's been in a lot of ways, as much as anybody can do individually, if they don't own a large business or, you know, contribute in that level, are you doing things that increase the value and appeal of your community, which increase, which raises all boats? That's what I'd say.
So, so let me just, you made a statement that, you know, the bike paths and hiking and it's going to be revenue generators. I love open space and I think we do a great job with open space. We just had a presentation from the open space committee and they came before us and told us thirty seven percent of our town is open space. And I thought that was pretty significant. And then I asked, there was a lady in the audience. And she, and I asked her what the average town has and she looked it up and told me it was ten percent. I'm taking her at her word for it. So we're almost forty, almost four times as much open space as, as most towns. So I would think that, I think we're doing a pretty good job of conserving or preserving open space.
Well.
With, with that being said, I can hear my questions coming here. So we have a chance to possibly get fifteen hundred acres. So what are your thoughts on the fifteen hundred acres? Because I just want to know, do you think bike paths and hiking? If, do you think we should use a portion of that to build some kind of an industrial park, some kind of a light industrial to, to encourage office buildings with higher paying jobs? I'm not talking retail. And do you think that would generate a significant amount of money as well as jobs for the town? As opposed to hiking and biking, which we already have a ton of in Plymouth? Would you, would you be in favor, as, now I'm talking as a member of the planning board, would you encourage, encourage that kind of development?
Long before I was a member of the planning board, myself and others, and now our group, the Pine Barrens Alliance, have advocated for the preservation of the majority of the land we're talking about, the Pine Hill, which is a rare piece of property environmentally. And on one side has the Pine Hills development. And on the other side, the nuclear power plant. And so we've been fortunate by accident to have that piece of property. So we've always had our eye on it because we knew that energy was leaving and then they left. And we knew that there would be a lot of people interested in that property for commercial development. It's kind of me, to me, it's kind of like beachfront property. It's sitting up with this fabulous view of P Town and all, and it's totally without development in that large section, just because it was a buffer around the plant. So we actually, because of a previous grant that we had won, were, were approached by the US Forest Service. Why don't you go for a Forest Service legacy grant? Which could get at one time between twenty and fifty million dollars. And our proposal was, and this was a specific proposal, was to preserve perhaps eleven hundred acres to work with the Fats program to, it's called Fatsia, to put bike paths and other things to maximize the use of tourism and things like that and connectivity to all other trails. And to not be concerned with and understand the potential commercial development of the property along Powerhouse Drive and that area, which is lesser quality, variety of issues, and not part of the hill itself. And we pushed that very, very hard and came very close to having, it was Holtek's, as we know it, unwillingness to continue in that process. But yes, we specifically said, this is an area for commercial development. This is an area for protection and preservation. This is an area for trails and tourism and connectivity to all the other wonderful land we have. So yes, as a planning board member, I would love to see an enlightened approach to that piece of property. And I'd also like to see that be something that's done openly by all boards because this community is very interested in that piece of property and preserving it in large part. Sure, we understand we need to have a balance of revenue of some sort and open space preservation. And of course, a lot of pressures on housing. But that's a piece of property, a once in a twenty thousand year piece of property. We compare it all the time to Acadia. It is the highest point between Acadia in the north and North Carolina in the south, within a mile of the ocean. It is something that US Forest Service knows should be preserved and would like to make us the grantee. And we'd love to move along those lines. So yes, I'm not at all dogmatic about, gee, you can't develop anything. I just think we should do the good, the best job of every development we do, whatever it's open space or commercial, whatever. And every piece of open space we have or commercial development should be considering water and should be considering air and biodiversity and proper use of the land and topography, which I'm glad to hear is a word that's come back to the planning board. The topography of certain areas should be preserved. So yes, I'm not dogmatic about it. I see it as an opportunity for everyone.
Well, just to make you feel good, feel better, is that our town manager, with the support of the select board, since he's been on board, we've been putting a half a million dollars or more in the mitigation fund. Because we, we understand the value of that land.
And it's going to be expensive, yeah.
That we're, we're going to be hopefully in a position to, to acquire that land when it comes, so.
So I would be.
So we understand that.
I would be gung ho.
Well, that's, that's, that's what we're working towards. So anyway, thank you, Frank.
Thank you.
Mr. Canty.
Mr. Mand, if you were to be appointed to the full position, do you anticipate that you would run to further serve the planning board in the annual town election in May?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else? So just my question, which is, given your position, do you foresee any conflicts coming up if you were to serve as a member of the planning board?
I think any passionate person about this community has philosophical concepts every moment, you know. But actual conflicts of interest? No, I don't see them coming up in, in any instance. We don't have, I don't have a financial interest in any of the conservation work I do. I don't get a salary. If somebody makes, saves a thousand acres, it doesn't do anything for me other than please me to see that we're moving along those lines, so I don't anticipate. But of course, if there was a conflict of interest, I would recuse myself gladly.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
We had two applications withdrawn, those of Michael Butts and Diane Pereira. So next we have Stephen McLaughlin.
Hello.
Good evening.
Good evening. It's nice to meet both boards. My name is Stephen McLaughlin. I am an attorney, been an attorney for forty five years now, and those years flew by. And throughout those years, I've had extensive experience in land use, zoning, planning and things of that nature. I represented developers, I've represented homeowners, I've worked with planning boards, I've worked against planning boards. I've worked with zoning boards, I've worked against zoning boards. I served for three years on the town of Carver zoning board of appeals. And then I moved up to Hingham and I served on the Hingham zoning board of appeals for nine years. And through those nine years, we would alternate the chairman position. So every third year I'd be a chairman. I have attended and participated and run literally hundreds of meetings for the zoning boards. I've written dozens and dozens of decisions. So I'm very familiar with that aspect of serving on a zoning board. In Hingham, there was a very close relationship between the zoning board and the planning board. And so we worked together frequently and very commonly had joint meetings. So for example, you might be familiar with the old Hingham shipyard. That was a joint zoning and planning project. The planning board created an overlay district that laid out basically what the, what the plan was, what the intention of the whole development would be. And then it was the zoning board that did the actual permitting process pursuant to those regulations under that overlay district. I'm very familiar with sheaves of paper, rolls of plans, reading plans, reading submissions, reading oppositions, dealing with engineers, dealing with peer, peer review. So no surprise there as to the, the level of the workload that's associated with being a member of a planning board. I would be willing to serve as an associate or alternate member. I don't think I have anything else I can add to, to my background.
Well, great, well, thank you. Well, great, well, thank you. So getting to the questions then. If you were to be appointed to this position, what is one thing that you see the current planning board doing that you'd like to see them continue doing? Or something that they're not doing that you'd like to see them start doing?
To be honest, I don't have the kind of information to even answer that question because I'm not that familiar with what the planning board has been doing or hasn't been doing. I'm sure that if I was on the board, I would be able to observe things that I might have concerns with or might have suggestions for.
Okay. And what, if any, changes would you suggest to the town zoning bylaws?
Again, I would say that I don't have the level of detail or familiarity with the town's bylaw to address any specific changes. I know that the role of the planning board is to make proposals for changes, I'm familiar with that, in that the planning board is somewhat of a legislative body where a zoning board is more of a quasi judicial body. But I wouldn't have any knowledge to say, I think this should be done or that should be done. Perhaps if there's anything that's a big concern to everybody, it's housing and affordability of housing. And how does a town continue to grow without having this huge urban sprawl? How do you meet the various economic requirements for the various residents? Higher income, middle income, lower income? And it's just extremely difficult to make an affordable housing with large land tracts and subdivisions that are huge. And so maybe a question of are mixed use zones, would those be helpful? We have commercial and residential together, but I don't pretend to be a land planner.
So what steps would you take as a planning board member to ensure that the community has a sustainable and secure water supply?
I think that the liberal use of conditions, covenants, and restrictions to what is permitted is very important for that. Stormwater management enforcement and application of those regulations, very important. I think that maintaining open space within subdivisions is a great way of maintaining that as well. I know in the subdivision I live in, there are fifty-five lots, but there's also dedicated conservation land. And there are walking trails through that, so it's great for the residents, but it's also great to maintain that open space and not simply be dividing lots into, two acre lots that only a portion of it's used.
I'm sure you've been exposed to sand and gravel as part of your experiences, so what is your perspective on the role of sand and gravel removal and site preparation on commercial projects?
It's a question of scale. This town is famous, I think, among those people who do sand and gravel for the Boy Scout case that goes back several years, when the Boy Scouts wanted to do huge removal of sand and gravel for a Christmas tree farm. And that was looked at and saying, wait a minute, you're really doing a sand and gravel operation, and the Christmas tree farm is only incidental to that. And I've done earth removal permits in other towns. So sometimes it's a game, sometimes it's real. So, for example, in Hingham, there was a project that the fills and cuts were such that there had to be a substantial amount of material removed. But the legitimate purpose of the developer was six homes. So it was clear that it truly was incidental. In other cases I've seen, the plan was to basically go in and pull out every bit of material that was good and saleable, and then, well, we'll do somewhat of a final end use. I think that the planning board, I'm sure, and the whole town recognizes, we're sitting on a gold mine of sand, gravel, but that's all sitting on top of a beautiful aquifer. And that aquifer has to be protected. So I think that the question of earth removal as being incidental and appropriate really is a question of scale to the project and truly related to the end use of the project.
So with that in mind, how can the town increase its commercial tax revenue, say "commercial" revenue, tax revenue, without compromising the integrity of our environment?
I think that, again, I would suggest that the plans for any development should be looking at maybe separating out gray water from black water, having filtration of gray water, private septic systems for black water, depending on the scale of the project, making sure that recharge areas are done appropriately, detention retention ponds are done appropriately, and also attracting the right type of commercial uses or industrial uses. Some uses, as you know, are water intensive, some are not.
Okay. With that, I will open it up to the members of the board. Mr. Canty.
Mr. McLaughlin, if you were appointed to the full position, would you seek to continue serving on the planning board by running in the May election?
Yeah, yes, I would.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Select Board? No. Planning Board? No. Yes, Mr. Blitzer.
Again, a similar question I asked in the other towns you've worked with, the, what are the height restrictions in, for instance, Hingham and, was it Middleborough?
Hingham was a very, very restrictive town. It was three stories. And that was done very consciously because if Hingham wanted to maintain its appeal, its appearance, as basically an old town, as is Plymouth, with old buildings, as Plymouth has, and didn't want to have a situation where ten-story high-rise apartment buildings were going in everywhere. And so it's been very, very clear that those height restrictions are going to remain in force. It was broken once for a forty B project, and the stories went up to six stories for a project called the Erickson or Linden Ponds Project, which is in Hingham. But that was in an area that was pretty much an old quarry area. And there were balloon tests and everything to show exactly what the height of the buildings would be. And it was deemed to be acceptable for that height to be there, and of course, with the forty B aspect of it, that just blew out the height restrictions.
But Plymouth is a hundred and six square miles. At a town of this size, do you think with all the residential developments that we have and our taxes keep going up, that we need to encourage more commercial revenue to help offset our residential taxes? And you think that the height restriction is a little antiquated? And you think that we should go up? Like Carver, for instance, is Carver seventy feet? Is that, is that not accurate?
I don't know what current is, but as far as going up, if you're going up for light industrial or industrial?
That's what I'm talking, I'm talking in the industrial parks.
I'm sorry?
I'm talking in the industrial park areas.
Okay, so industrial park areas.
Office buildings.
The issue with industrial parks, that I'm familiar with, is depending upon the use, the floor strength is a deciding factor of a lot of what a building can be used for. So although you might be able to go up, those upper floors may not be able to carry that load that the lower floors can, which are basically concrete on slab. So it's not a situation, I don't think of, if you build it, they will come. I think you have to know who's looking for what, and can we accommodate what they're looking for? So, you know, I think we can all recognize it's cheaper to build a building on slab than it is to go up. The engineering costs, the construction costs, everything just goes up. But the beauty of going up is that you use left land.
Yes.
So again, it becomes a compromise of what do the builders, owners, developers need? What does the town want? And how can you bring those two things together? Because you obviously don't want to say you can only go up if the cost becomes so prohibitive that Plymouth isn't an option for them.
I'm just trying to bring in less water intensive buildings that need less, we would have to work on the parking restrictions to make sure they don't need as much parking, so they don't need as much asphalt.
Right. A perfect example of so much asphalt is, if you go to Kingston, I'll pick on Kingston, you go to Lowe's, I go to Lowe's all the time, they have a massive parking lot with a massive overflow parking lot that is never used, in fact, it's gated off. Yeah, they complied with their zoning bylaws as far as the number of spaces per square foot, but they overdid it.
But I think that might have a lot to do with, everybody's buying everything through Amazon, and so they don't need to, they really don't need to go there, so I think that has a lot to do. And that's the times. You know, what you built twenty years ago is different than what you're going to build today, so, anyway. But thank you, I get your answer, so.
I know you have a question about conflicts. It was common that I would be dealing with attorneys coming before the zoning board that I knew, that's really not a conflict, it's just you're aware of who they are. But as far as conflicts go, I wouldn't anticipate any. My practice, I've pretty much wound down my practice, I'm only doing a few select things now. But if there was a conflict, obviously, I would recuse myself.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next this evening, Adam Bond.
Good evening. Mister's Chairs, I think is how I'd have to phrase it. My name is Adam Bond. Don't hold it against me, but I'm from New York City, that's where I grew up for thirty-eight years. Spent a lot of time down on Wall Street doing commodities and securities litigation until two buildings across the street from my office fell down. I spent about six weeks doing cleanup and rescue and then left and came to the wonderful metropolis of Middleborough, which they say is the largest town in Massachusetts if you get rid of Mile Standish Park. That's the, that's what they like to say. And I started an office down there. And a couple of years into it, because of some experiences I had in New York with my family where they had difficulty in expanding a home because they weren't known. People that were known seemed to get things better done out there where they were. I vowed that that would never happen again, from my perspective. My perspective was, projects come in on their merits. I deal with the merits, not with the person, if I can help it. And that's when I decided, when I got to Middleborough, that I would try and become part of public service. So I ran against two old timers and I won by twenty votes and I got on the Board of Selectmen. And I served two terms on the Board of Selectmen. One of the joys, and I put that in air quotes, was dealing with the casino that came through there and negotiating that deal and dealing with that casino. And then, once the law changed, spending another five or six years fighting that casino out of Taunton. But I've been on both sides of it. In Middleborough, they had a very interesting planning department where the planner at the time didn't want any building. That creates a problem. So the Board of Selectmen that was there knew me and they asked me if I would run for that board to see if we could do something to get more balance between commercial and open space, which is very important to a community that is mostly farming. So I ran and I was chairman for five years of the planning board during that timeframe. A lot of it was trying to reorganize it, and a lot of it was trying to get rid of the concept that Middleborough was anti-developer. And there were people that would not, Marcus Baptiste wouldn't have set foot in that place. A lot of people would not set foot in Middleborough because of the difficulty they had dealing with the roadblocks and the expanding demands that would happen in Middleborough. And then I moved here. Go play some at Caja Pond, little piece of heaven. I wake up in the morning on vacation. It's a beautiful place. This town, I've been here for the last eight years, and I sat down and I read that you folks didn't have anybody apply for these positions. And I thought, that's a shame, it's a great position. I enjoyed myself while I was doing it. And I couldn't see why people wouldn't do that. I'm a litigator, I have sued towns on zoning matters, I have sued them on planning matters, I have presented before planning boards, I have presented before zoning boards, I'm currently in the process of fighting with Middleborough on a denial of a zoning application. I'm in it. I appreciate it, I think about it, and I love it. Do I know what Plymouth does specifically? I've been reading The Independent. I don't know if you folks like The Independent or not, but I've been reading The Independent. And this is a very lively community, not only on the Board of Selectmen side of things, but on the development side of things. And I have always had an interest in, in public service. And not only an interest, I have committed a lot of portions of my life to public service and I continue to do so. I hope to do so again, whether it be in a full position, whether it be in an associate position, or whether I can just get you guys coffee during a meeting.
We tend to drink water during the meetings.
Yeah, it makes it easier to sit for longer.
So with that background now, if you were to be appointed to the planning board position, what's one thing that the planning board, as you've observed, is currently doing you'd like to see them continue, or something that they're not doing that you think that they should be doing?
You're allowing me to be presumptuous, so I appreciate that. From my short span of focusing in on what the planning board does, I have a great appreciation for anyone who can see the difference between cranking out gravel for purposes of bogs and cranking out gravel for purposes of an industrial park. Those are two different things, by any stretch of the imagination. I know we're going to get to that. The other piece that I appreciate, having come from a town where the board was a little less cohesive, is the fact that I am dealing with people that are attentive to detail, as I can tell, and focused on what they're doing. I would hope that that, this is evidence of how a meeting runs, but that's something good that I think everybody in this town should be proud of.
And what, if any, changes would you suggest to the town zoning bylaw?
I'm not going to be as presumptuous as to say that I know the whole zoning bylaw. I was trying to find something in the zoning bylaw the other day about balconies on houses. It's not a greatly user-friendly document, even when it's on three sixty and you're trying to search stuff. And then the things that I was reading, I know I'm a lawyer, I know we can take gobble de gil and make sense out of it. I agree with the speaker that was saying it needs to be made more user-friendly from language. The language is stilted in many cases, I deal with that incidental to language in Middleborough. More specific language needs to be placed in and things need to be pared down. We just finished doing a recodification of our zoning bylaws. And I go back and I read it after we've already done them and passed them, and I can see things we've missed. It's got to be user-friendly. Forget, forget the developers for the moment. When I sit down and I want to know, can I put a, can I put a deck on my house or not? I want to be able to find it easily, and it's not easy to find.
So what steps would you want to take as a planning board member to ensure that the community has a sustainable water supply?
Some would be popular, some would not. I think, I think the most effective thing I've seen, or one of the most effective things I've seen is in Middleborough where they have water resource protection districts. And they control the activities that happen in those particular districts, and you have to go before the Board of Selectmen to do an application if you're in WRPD Zone One, Zone Two, Zone Three, Zone Four, because Middleborough has a ton of water and a lot of wells and we want to protect them. In other communities I've seen, when projects come before them, they make sure that there are water sustaining limitations. For example, non-fertilizer dependent vegetation being used in various places that are down by water. There are other places, depending on where the, where the water table is, where the, where the freshwater lens is and the table is, they have things, for example, called five-ring septic systems that are shallower, so that the bases of the septic systems don't land in the water lens. Looking at those types of technologies, to me, are very important. At the same time, it's not just a planning board focus, you also need other regulations in towns. When I lived out in Southampton in New York... When I lived out in Southampton in New York, you couldn't use soaps with a certain level of phosphate. You couldn't use certain chemicals to pour down your toilet. So I think it's actually more than just on the planning board that you need to focus on trying to limit some of the activities. You know, you certainly wanna scrub the water, you wanna recycle gray water if you can and do those things. But I think it's also a town-wide obligation to try and focus on creating legislation or rules that will work.
So getting to the gravel removal.
Ah, gravel removal.
What is your perspective on gravel removal in connection with economic development projects?
To me, what it is you're ultimately going to leave me with is incredibly important. We had a guy that came in and the first thing he applied for was he said, hey, I'm gonna do bogs. Well, that didn't work. Then he said, I'm gonna do a pond and it's gonna be 50 feet deep in the middle and I'm gonna stock it with fish and everybody in town can fish there for free. None of this stuff was, made any sense. At the end of the day, every time we granted it for bogs, there were a couple of problems. One, the bogs wouldn't all get built, that was a big problem. Two, no one ever takes the gravel out all at once, they're waiting for the price to move. So we'd put timeframes on and they'd come in for extensions and the boards would grant the extension. So these were the never-ending gravel removal projects where people lived on a moonscape and the neighbors are covered in dust because nobody's watering down anything. You got jake breaking going up and down the roads and 50 trucks going up and down, you know, every day. Now, if you can deal with, if you can set up an order of conditions that controls some of that stuff, which you can, then the end result to me is really important. If your end result is an economic machine, like an industrial park, like you guys had that choice between the two, that's sort of where I'd go. But if you're dealing with bogs, which are hit or miss, I don't know whether or not Ocean Spray's gonna be picking them up, I don't know if they're private, I don't know who it is that's gonna be dealing with them, I haven't read the articles enough. But when I looked at it, I said, the likelihood of ending up with a good end product was going to be on the side that the town went, which is with the industrial park. I thought the odds were lower with regard to the, and I'm not trying to disparage anybody, I'm just being blunt because I'm from New York. The, I didn't think you were gonna end up with the better product, end result, which is what we're left with if you were doing it with bogs.
So how do you believe the town can increase its commercial tax revenues through commercial development while still preserving the integrity of our environment?
I mean, to some degree, doing some of what it's been doing. Cordage Park was not Cordage Park forever. I remember when I was in Middleborough, I was going over there to meet Tom Colther about some things. And, and it didn't look anything like it does now. You folks seem to be renovating buildings. I can't remember who the individual is who took over the building, you know where Willenco is, that building that it's in?
Yeah.
That building didn't look like that when I first moved to Massachusetts. You guys have taken the downtown and really given it some care and given it some deliberate detail that makes it a nice town. I think you reuse buildings to the extent you can, you cluster what you can. And you try and end up in a position where you are bringing long-term business. Why do I say that? People keep talking about taxes going up and down. You got Prop 2 and 1/2. Somebody puts a nuclear power plant in your backyard that's paying you a million dollars. Okay, you now have new growth. So it's, it's last year's levy limit plus new growth plus 2 and 1/2 percent. If that company leaves and that land is in trust, they don't take away from last year's tax limit. They don't take away from last year's levy limit. That dollar amount that that short-term business had now gets spread among everybody else and we're all paying it. So it's not just getting.
You're a genius, how did you figure that out?
It's, it is the biggest, it is the biggest crock that I had ever dealt with.
You like I-Christmas tree, by the way?
I, I, yes. But the thing to me, that's the, the thing to me that's the problem is that, that you can't just do it by getting any business. You've gotta go out and promote good, long-lasting business. And that's sort of where I am in terms of what, what the Board of Selectmen was trying to get me to help do when I got on the board, when I got on the planning board in, in Middleborough.
I'm gonna open it up to questions from the boards. Mr. Candy.
Mr. Bond, if you were appointed to this position, would you seek to continue serving on the planning board by running in the May election for a further term?
Yes, I would and I'd need to find sign locations too.
Thank you.
Mr. Donaldson.
Hello.
Hello. Yankees, Mets, or Red Sox?
I was never a Yankees fan and I was a Montreal Expos fan, actually.
All right.
So, does that work?
Uh, that's, that's a pass.
Okay.
Bruins, Rangers.
Bruins.
Or Islanders.
Not, I used to go watch the Islanders with my father, but I'll take the Bruins.
All right.
The conflicts question, since you are still in practice and you do practice, obviously, in an area similar to these concerns, are regular conflicts something you might anticipate occurring in the planning board situation here in Plymouth?
Surprisingly, no. When I was in Middleborough, I believe I had one that came before me. There, there were, as the prior gentleman said, you know, I knew that lawyer, I knew that developer, but I wasn't there, they weren't my client. And in fact, when I was on the board in, in Middleborough, I actually just took less people that were developers or were gonna show up in front of me because I was on the board, I didn't wanna cross-pollinate.
Questions from anyone else? Mr. Blitzer.
Mr. Bond, a couple of things first before I ask my question is if, if you like lawsuits, you're gonna fit right in, so.
If I like lawsuits?
If you like lawsuits, you're gonna fit right in, you'll be comfortable. But one word don't mention, don't, is casino, because you'll get run out of town, so that's.
I know the feeling.
That's just a little free tip. In your experience and especially in Middleborough, Plymouth has had a lot of controversial projects. And we get the planning board, zoning board, select board, we all get, we get some really active citizens and neighborhoods in this town. And, and they show up and they'll let you know how they feel. So my question to you is, have you had that kind of a situation in Middleborough and how do you handle it? Because I've seen, I've seen, and I'm, I'm not talking about anybody here, but there's been situations where they kinda play to the crowds. And that's, that's not what I want from somebody on any board. You have to vote what you think is right, whether it's politically correct or not. And have you had that situation, how have you handled it? And do you think you're gonna have any issues in, on the planning board if you get appointed to it here?
All right, I'll have to take these in pieces. Yes, I've had those issues. There were the casino wars, there were the garbage wars, there were a whole number of wars that occurred while I was on the Board of Selectmen. I was only chairman of that for one year. My view is, the chairman runs the meeting, so we back our chairman, we sit with our chairman. There's, there's an order, if I were chairman, is the only way I can explain. My view is that people speaking, whether it be loudly, but as long as they speak respectfully, is a catharsis. People are there because they wanna get something off their chest. I'm there behind that desk because I wanna hear it, or not, but I'm going to be polite and I'm going to listen to what is, is being said. I found that the best way to diffuse some of these meetings, and I have been in somewhere, the rooms were packed and they wanted nothing but to ride everybody out on a rail. And I sat there as chairman and I let the meeting go and go and go, little pieces at a time, and things calmed. And we began to have discussion. I don't vote, I don't vote the way the room pushes. I vote the way I think is correct. I remember my first day sitting on the Board of Selectmen, the fellow leaned over to me and he said, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna vote for him because he was an idiot in high school, he's an idiot now. And it was a four-to-one vote, because I turned to him and I said, he's got all the facts, yes, but, and I voted. And I voted my way. Next time I came in, the chairman said, how are you gonna vote? And I said, I don't know until five minutes after I've done it. You've gotta listen. That's, God gave me two ears and one mouth, I gotta use them proportionally. And that's, that is, I think, how, all people, and I think all of you as voters, as well as people that are sitting behind that desk, know that all you want is to be heard. Sometimes it's not even the result, you just wanna be heard. And that's how I think you diffuse the situation. Did I answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Mr. Bond. Next, next this evening, we have Ambreen Khan.
Good evening. Wanna thank you for coming out and I wanna thank you for bringing your little one with you who's clearly finding this so riveting she's fallen asleep.
Nah, she's a hard worker like her mom. She, she walked the graduation walk with me. I was pregnant with her when I went to NYU, so she's been there for, for everything in my life. I want to thank you for giving me this opportunity. So yes, I'm Ambreen Khan, I'm originally from New York City. Maybe we might have met because I worked at William Street for a buy-side mining advisory. So I kind of know about mining. At NYU, I did my MPH. When you do your Masters of Public Health, you learn about the environment, how it has an effect on people, on our health outcomes, and then also the cost that it burdens the government. For example, the mining, the gravel site, the particles that are released, things like that. In the subway system in New York City, they're always, you know, checking the levels of the particles inside. If not now, 10, 20 years from now, it can be a burden. At a young age, I grew up in Jackson Heights, which was a planned neighborhood. They have garden apart, apartments where they have gardens that are open to the public once a year. So planning is very important. I went to Joseph Pulitzer, which is now, now is a magnet school. I was the president of the Environmental Club, so I really love the environment. I bought an acre of reindeer forest when I was a kid. I was the editor of chief in 7th, 8th grade and in high school. They didn't have a newspaper, I'm like, no, let's, let's do one. My dad worked for a printing company. I walked First Avenue from 1st, from 15th Street to 11th Avenue, 15th Street. And my, my parents were immigrants, they migrated in the 70s. They left a place where they thought they could take care of a country well, but when you see that there's no honesty, things can go wrong. And the great thing about Plymouth moving, I think, my parents moved here in 2002, right after 9/11. And the locals have been very nice. They bought a business and people from the church came, you know, if anything happens, because, you know, coming from New York and my ethnicity, which people may wonder what it is, people have questions, right? But with my New York City upbringing, learning about different cultures, the history, which I totally love, the history of Central Park, Acadia, how that came to be, the Rockefeller's. I'm an avid reader, I took a speed reading class, I think that's how I got through med school and I did my MBA also with her. I did it actually locally, I'm like, how am I gonna do this if I'm working in New York, coming here on the weekends? So I enrolled at Curry right here nearby, did it on the weekend. So I am a hard worker currently, I work for UMass Med and the cool thing I saw with the, with the school was how they help the government. They have project managers. They, instead of having Deloitte come in and give their expertise, they have project managers helping with state projects. When I saw that and when I was looking at data and luckily my mom, you know, she worked for Swiss Bank and they trained her with computers back in the 80s and I would take the train to her office and I learned how to use computers at a young age in the 80s, I, I knew how to work with data. So when COVID hit and I got furloughed, I was like, you know what, I wanna get into data science because I saw a lot of data, mass health data, provider data, and I saw how data can actually help influence decisions, right? So I did a data science course, data analytics. I'm currently working as a contractor, contractor for EEA. So I get to see also environmental data. So I thought that perhaps by, like if I was chosen, I think I would have that medical knowledge because even in med school you do learn about, for example, the water system, contamination, things like that. Even the wind direction of how, like the windows, how, how air should flow in a home, how that is so important.
Okay, so why don't we bring that to planning then, here, which is the position? So with all your skillset and obviously your data science knowledge, if you were appointed to this position, what's something that you think the planning board is doing that it should continue? Or something that it's not doing that it should be doing?
I think the public health would be a very good consideration and the environmental aspect. Like, do we have, the projects that are being, that are gonna go forward, are they LEED certified? Like, are they environmentally sound, like are they, is it hurting the environment? And I think Plymouth can be a great role model for other towns in Massachusetts. I mean, even with the criminal justice system, for example, like, or even in New York City, how they look at the public health examples. When I went to, I went to, I traveled a few countries to study health. But I think this is a great opportunity because we have the land and how we plan it, we can be case, cases for others to study. And if I was, if I had, if I was in the position also, I'm very resourceful with networking. So even though when I was working for the state through my LinkedIn, I connected to people on LinkedIn that did similar projects and I just like, hey, how did you handle this? I had no problems, I think that's why, even though I went for a babysitting position while, you know, studying for my medical boards, the CEO wanted to hire me because I was able to call people and, you know, do things for him. Yes, it paid well, but I didn't wanna do that. So I think I would be able to connect with resources, untapped resources. We have a great, we have a lot of great universities here. And if we had interns and other people to look at what we're doing or if we needed more information or look at case samples, it would just broaden our eyes of like, what are more possible choices, decisions we can make going forward.
Okay, great. What, if any, changes would you suggest to the town zoning bylaws? If any?
I think we are very careful when we move ahead. I remember how we tried to make this like, kind of like Hollywood, like rock studios and many people are opposed to it, they didn't really wanted major change. I think when, when we make something to a large scale, more people, more offices, the the way, like I feel like things can get out of hand, so everything should be done at a step or increment, incremental way because if you don't plan properly, then after a certain time, we may regret our decisions. So every, all different aspects should be looked at, health, the environment. I have the MBA also, for example, if there needs to be more awareness, I'm really good at, like I work for the Red Cross. like, I worked for the Red Cross, too, as a volunteer. I was a coordinator of the year because I got in so much donations for the homeless services. That was in high school, by the way. So I think by having more younger folks also involved, like kids, because they're into the environment, like the water conversation, like, mommy, no, like, we can't, like, have the sprinklers like this way. Or also, with the university students, like, hey, we know that this case happened in this country where they were able to dig ditches so that water can penetrate into the soil and so the water levels can increase, you know, things like that.
Okay, so what steps would you wanna take as a planning board member to help preserve our sources of fresh water?
Think out of the box, look at different other resources that can help us for free. That's another thing, the hospital is known for doing things with no budget.
Okay. Now, what is your perspective on the role of sand and gravel removal when it comes to commercial development?
We have to look at also the health implications and look, wait, is it necessary? I heard someone talking about incidental reasons why it was needed. So I think what we do here, like, looking, you know, having the hearing and having part, the committee also doing the research of, hey, you know, I found this, what do you think about this? Is there anyone? And then maybe also raising it to the public, like, you know, we know that this factor exists, or that, you know, or whatever the other things that may play a part in the decision-making, putting out in the public also, so that if anyone needs to say something, they can also say something. And maybe a little ahead of time for that would be, I think, good.
Great. And finally, how do you believe the town can increase its commercial tax revenue while still preserving the integrity of our environment?
Well, I know that places like Orlando, they have that resort fee, $25 or $30. If every night is booked, that's more than $9,000 per room. So I think there are other ways of increasing tax revenue.
Okay, great. And would you be interested in serving as the alternate if you weren't appointed to the full position?
Yes.
Okay, at this point, I'm gonna open it up. Mr. Canty?
Ms. Khan, if you were to be appointed to the full position, do you expect that you would run in the annual election to continue to serve on the planning board?
I can't make that decision right now, to be honest.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Select board? No? Planning board? Thank you very much for coming out this evening.
Thank you.
And last on our list this evening, Christopher Smith.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Chairs and committees, very excited to be here. I have been in, my wife and I moved here three years ago, from New Jersey, so we came here to be near the grandkids. And I retired two and a half years ago. I'm an architect and forty-plus years of experience nationally, so all around the country, on major corporate clients primarily. But coming here to Plymouth has been a tremendous experience. The, the size of the town is quite large, and there's so much open space. It has so much to offer. From what I understand, the downtown has certainly changed a lot over the last ten years. We hear from people who have been there all along. So what I'd like to do is, is really contribute to the development of the town, and have it be done in a way that makes sense and is respectful of, of the history of the town as well. So that's, that's really why I'm here. I'm not, I've not had a lot of public experience. It's all been private, so it's really something new for me and something I would really be interested in doing. And that's why I'm applying, or interested in the associate position or the alternate position, really to get a better sense of what's, what the planning committee, planning board does, and really begin to contribute there.
Great. So what's one thing that you see the planning board doing currently that you would encourage it to continue, or something that they're not doing that you would say we should start?
Well, I, I took the opportunity since this, this came around, to see the December Fourth online, the committee, and that was quite an experience and really-
Everybody's got that great meeting on their mind.
It's really, it's like, it's like three hours, right?
I can, I can say, not all of our meetings go that long, so that's at least from a-
I was, I was totally impressed with how it was handled by all of you, in terms of working with the community and having, being open to questions and really handling issues in a very positive way. So I was extremely impressed with that. And that's something, I think, really is something that should continue.
What changes, if any, would you suggest with respect to the town's zoning bylaws? And, you know, we've been asking this question, and everyone has answered in one general sense, which is, I don't know the zoning bylaw, and that's okay. None of us have the zoning bylaws memorized, nor should we. If we do, we have other problems. But obviously, from a general standpoint, what zoning bylaw changes would you think might work for Plymouth?
I'd like to put it in terms of the master plan, the new master plan. The old master plan looked, looked, looks quite comprehensive, but I think it's, it was time to redo the master plan. So I think that one, things that'll come out of that process would be applicable to the zoning.
So what steps would you propose as a planning board member to ensure that Plymouth has a sustainable, secure water source?
I know that that's been a major issue in town. Everybody talks about it, a lot of opinions about it. I think that the fact that there's one aquifer for, for the town is significant, and that tremendous amount of attention needs to be spent on each individual project, but also what's the, the broader process for dealing with the gravel removal, the sand removal. It's something that we all see happening in town, and so I think it needs to be handled in, in a way that promotes development, but also is, maintains that, that protection for the aquifer, because-
So how do you see gravel removal, then, as part of that process?
I think, you know, as we've heard tonight, I think gravel removal is something that has to be done, or, or, you know, it's, it's discussed as removal only. I don't know if it moves from one place to another, but I think that's something that has to be very carefully monitored.
So finally, how do you believe the town can increase its commercial tax revenue through development while still protecting the integrity of our environment?
That's a, that's a balance, and I think that, you know, every, every town struggles with that, that issue. In, in New Jersey, where we came from, in Princeton Junction, it was, it was, you know, that was the subject at all times, how do we increase the ratables? So it's a matter of, of being very smart about where the commercial development occurs and how dense it is, and having it more dense in the areas where it can be, so it's not just spread around the township.
Okay, great. I'm gonna open it up to members. Mr. Canty?
Mr. Smith, if you were to be appointed to the, did you say you only wanted to be appointed to the associate position?
That's correct.
So you're not looking to be appointed to the full at all?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any others? No. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Quintal, this time, I'm gonna turn it back to you.
Mr. Chairman, sir, quick clarification, maybe to Mr. Bolton. The seat is up, the full seat is up in May for a five-year term.
No, the seat is up in May for a, for the remainder of that outstanding term, which is one year.
One year, okay.
One year.
Thank you.
So in May, you would run for that seat. That seat would be a one-year term. You would then have to run again the following year if you wish to continue on that board. At that point, that would be the only five-year seat running at that time.
Last night at the school committee, we took, if anyone had nominations and seconded. That makes it a lot easier, if you will, swifter. So if anybody at this time has nominations? Mr. Canty?
I nominate Joseph Higgins for the open, full seat on the planning board.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Golden. Any other nominations? John?
So, first of all, a four-month term, nine individuals. I think originally, this list was eleven. And, you know, nine individuals coming out, it's, it's an abundance of talent here. Sometimes, people get up there, it's their first time, you know, whether it's advocating for themselves to get a public position, you know, and Mr. Bond has extensive experience, Mr. Mand and others, but, you know, it's not, not an easy thing. We all started there some, sometime in our careers, and I just wanted to compliment everybody who came out tonight. But there's a wealth of talent here, and I'll nominate Mr. Frank Mand.
Nominated by Mr. Mahoney. Is there a second?
I'll, I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Golden. Mr. Man. I'd like to nominate Adam Bond.
Second.
Second by Mr. Blitzer. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. We go right from the top. Joseph Higgins, this is for the full term seat, right?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Higgins, one. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Okay, I think that answers that. Congratulations, Mr. Higgins. And for the alternate seat, or associate seat, as they call it?
Well, we, that's, that's our board only.
Oh, good for you.
Yes. So for your, you get, you get to sit for a moment.
That's okay.
And our board gets to decide. I will entertain motions for the associate position at this point.
Nominate Mr. Adam Bond.
Okay.
A second.
Any other nominations? I would nominate Christopher Smith.
I'll second that.
Okay. In favor of Mr. Bond? In favor of Mr. Smith?
They can split it half the year.
Do we have a suggestion, Mr. Chair?
Please, Mr. Grandy.
We do have a new member, and that will be five, so I would suggest that we vote for the alternate at our next scheduled planning board meeting, when it's on the agenda.
Kelly's here.
Now, let's do that.
I'm, I'm, I will, I will defer to Mr. Higgins, because I don't necessarily want, because Mr. Higgins has not had the, other than he's hurt everybody, he's not had the privilege of seeing all of the applications in fall.
Well, he hasn't, no, but he still can be sworn in right now.
Okay, well, you can be sworn in this evening, but why, why don't we, we will put the alternate vote up for our next scheduled meeting, not tomorrow's meeting, as it is not on our agenda, but it'll be the following meeting. Obviously, people are, those, the two candidates, Mr. Bond and Mr. Smith, are welcome to attend again. I will not hold it against you if you're not planning on attending immediately, and I'm certainly not gonna ask for more speeches. We've heard from you plenty. If you wanna talk again, we can talk about that. But, so we'll defer that to our next full planning board meeting. That would be on, I believe, so it's not this coming Wednesday, but the following, the two weeks, we meet on the second and the fourth Wednesday, so that should be the 22nd. With that, unless the planning board has any further business this evening, that's our agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn the planning board?
Motion to adjourn the planning board.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? The planning board portion of this joint meeting is adjourned. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and select board members for hosting us this evening and for your participation, and it's greatly appreciated.
It was our pleasure.
And thank you again to all of the candidates who came out. I'm gonna echo what Mr. Mahoney said. It is, it's something to step up. It's something to stand here and to answer questions, and these were not easy questions. This was not a softball that was thrown to everybody. You were, you were challenged, and you all set forth great ideas, and I encourage all of you to please continue, get involved, apply for other committees, for other positions. There is a wealth of opportunity in this town, and all of you would be valuable assets to our community to continue to participate. So thank you.
Thank you. We'll take a five-minute recess.
One through four, seven through thirteen, and twenty through twenty-two as a group.
That was easier.
I'll second him.
Motion by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Bledsoe, discussion? Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Mr. Golden?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, anyone wishing to speak on the public comment? Ms. Sheehan? Anyone online, Jade? Welcome, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, Speaker. Thanks for your opportunity to speak. My name is Meg Sheehan, I'm speaking on behalf of the Land and Water Coalition, Chair of the Town Hall of Commerce. We're starting out.
My name is Meg Sheehan, I'm here as the Coordinator of the Community Land and Water Coalition. We're a nonprofit group that seeks to protect, preserve, and steward the land and water resources of southeastern Massachusetts, including in Plymouth. I'm here to comment on the master plan process, which has been going on in Plymouth. As you know, we attended a meeting last night in Cedarville. And I also want to address the Plymouth Foundation and how the Board of Selectmen's activities in executive session all relate to the land use matters that are being discussed in the master planning process. To have a legitimate master planning process, we must have transparency with regard to the land use discussions that are happening in this town. And some of the examples are the thousand acres in South Plymouth. Everyone perhaps here knows, but not everyone in the town knows, that that's a thousand acres of land that has only three hundred acres of tax title cleared land and that is under discussion. We also have the fifteen hundred acres of the Holtek land that is under discussion as well. The Board of Selectmen routinely, over the past several years, has had held executive sessions time and again about the thousand acres, about the fifteen hundred acres, and other land use decisions such as Plymouth Beach, the American Cruise Lines, et cetera. This is a concern because some of these topics are discussed in closed doors situations with the Plymouth Foundation. The Plymouth Foundation is a nonprofit organization, yet it engages in these discussions with town employees about these land use issues. There's a memorandum of understanding with the town and the Plymouth Foundation for the town to pay a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year for a full-time Economic Development Director. Since two thousand and nine, the town has paid the Plymouth Foundation one point eight million dollars in for services to undertake activities according to this MOU in consultation with state and local officials regarding topics such as the thousand acres. Five town employees are on that board of the Plymouth Foundation. That includes the Chair of the Board of Selectmen, the Town Manager, the Town Planner, the Zoning Board of Appeals member, Mr. O'Reilly, and Mr. Kimball. Certainly, there is an appearance of conflict of interest under General Laws, Chapter two sixty-eight A. The Plymouth Foundation, according to its own minutes, which I have right here, discusses topics that the Board of Selectmen discusses only in executive session. And the thousand acres is a perfect example of that. For example, most recently, on December third, the Board of Selectmen discussed the thousand acres.
Excuse me, Ms. Sheehan, if you've had over three minutes, which is, would you, about how much more time do you think you need?
I've, a few more minutes.
Few more minutes?
Yes, and this is an important matter.
It certainly is.
So in December of twenty twenty-four, the thousand acres was discussed in executive session of the Board of Selectmen and in June and October. Meanwhile, the Plymouth Foundation is holding meetings in which these very same town employees are discussing this executive session topic with a private organization. So this is a serious matter. I don't know how the town can engage in master planning when these types of decisions are being held behind closed doors. Just to quote from the minutes of one of the Plymouth Foundation meetings, "Mr. Halcy inquired if there's any parcels of land available that the Foundation could take over and develop, preferably within the thousand acres of available land." "Lee noted that when a deal for the property is structured with fish and wildlife, an agreement could be made to count the acreage towards mitigation for any future conservation of land." Stephen and Derek will discuss the matter at a later date. Matt would like to know how many properties are available for development by the Plymouth Foundation? Is this the way the town of Plymouth is going to carry out its master planning with regard to land use? I think the public deserves some answers. Thank you.
We took all your notes, and I, you know, I'm not going to respond to you as it would be starting something new, but I have reached out to you to have a sit-down and go over, and I'll gladly answer any questions that I can for you. Okay, I think it would clear up a lot of the imaginatory stuff of what might be going on and where it might be going on. Yeah, it's a fact, and it's a wrong, you're insinuating that the the Foundation and the town are having secret meetings over the thousand acres, and that's not the case. What, that I can tell you, and I will tell you. So I would rather than, rather than stir the pot, and this is the whole reason I reached out to you, so we could sit down, me and you, sit down and have an intelligent conversation, because I know you're a smart woman, and I respect that. And I would like to go over it and put the olive branch out so we can move productively forward. If we can't, then, believe me, I won't waste your time nor mine, but I really sincerely mean that. And I, you know, I hope, and I would like to learn some of the things that I don't know. You know, I don't know everything, but I don't want to insinuate, and I will go as far to say that the thousand acres has never been looked at by anybody on this table for development at this present time. So, I usually don't, but I think it's that important to stop the buzz out there that might be wrong. Don't insinuate, we have executive sessions as dictated by Mass General Laws. And you are, I think you're a lawyer, I'm assuming, I'm hoping you are, then you should understand that. And it hasn't started with this board, it didn't start with, you know, this year, that's the way it's been done, contracts, any employee, you know, I'm just, yeah, some things have to be done a certain way. Real estate, real estate transactions is the same. So, I mean, I will say this. I've never sat with four other members that are willing to do so much for conservation. That I will tell you, so, and that's all I can tell you. Well, I ju, you know. Yes, I, and you're absolutely right, it was, you answered me back and said, "The week of the state's just been crazy this week," so. But I was going to ask you maybe next week or the following week, and I look forward to that. Okay, is there anyone else wishing to speak on the public comment? Please come up, and I, yeah, that's fine, I'm sorry, I was looking at Jade because I know we have somebody online, but I apologize. Just identify yourself for the record and make sure the green light's on.
Steve Lantang, Baldwin-Sarco. First off, say Happy New Years.
Yes.
And since while we're here, I just figured I'd ask, how's the, the application process going for this CIC?
We don't hear anything, so.
Thank you for.
Sorry, airport.
No, no, I've just.
Thank you for the question, Steve, I actually spoke with Jade earlier this evening, and she mentioned that we had over thirty candidates and we intend to put it on an agenda in the near future.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please identify yourself for the record and make sure the green light's on.
Evernote LaGoody, North Plymouth Member Advisor in Finance. One issue I'd like to bring up, and I believe I brought it up a few other times in the past few years. We keep talking about the expansion of development in the industrial parks, not just for hype, but also for economic activity. But one thing that is of concern that's been for a number of years is the inland outlet of the industrial park on the Cherry Street. For a number of years, there has been either cat and mouse activity with vehicles trying to block sightlines of another vehicle to see traffic in the opposing direction so they can make a safe exit out of there. This is the only inland outlet out of the industrial park that is not signalized and barely has a stop sign that's visible multiple times due to large vehicles exiting. So I'm asking, most likely not this year, but at least looking at a study of possibly putting a signalization there of either lights or some sort of mechanism so that this intersection, one leads to another part of our industrial commercial area, the other part leads into a residential neighborhood, and also across the street is also a mix of residential and a commercial entity. And I think that this needs attention for the safety, not just of the people that work in the industrial park that are exiting out that way for access to the interchange and just to go into North Plymouth, they live in that vicinity, but also for regular business activity from residents and others that are either patroning businesses and they're using it as an alternate means of cut-through onto commerce way. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, please.
Oh, sorry, I didn't realize it was on. Just a quick question about the Article Nine. Is, is what's going to the spring meeting just what we saw there, just the fifty-five thousand dollar increase in the budget? Is that Article Nine, or is there more detail to it?
Article Nine is the operating, is the enterprise fund for the airport.
Okay.
That contains the recommended rate for town meeting approval for that particular enterprise fund.
Right, so is there any particular, are they going for funding for increasing, you know, for the airport extension?
The airport is designed to be self-funded through primarily the sale of fuel and rent, and there will be presentations to the Advisor and Finance Committee in regards to the specifics of that enterprise fund that will be publicly available that you're invited to attend.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Bell? Hello?
Hi, this is Dan Bell, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Hi, thanks for taking the questions. I don't really have questions, just comments. It's more along the lines of your next meeting with the School Committee and the Finance Committee. I anticipate another economic struggle with the budget, and I still don't understand why we don't have a split tax rate. Alls I heard tonight was questions about what could be done about raising the commercial tax rate, yet we constantly vote down a split tax rate separating out commercial businesses. I watched that presentation that you guys did, you know, with the advisor, and it didn't make sense to me, to tell you the truth. Anyways, that, that's one thing. The other thing I wanted to bring up was, I, I think I forgot to mention Dan Bell from Cedarville, Nine Stets in Court. You know, there's this whole groundswell of people that are accusing Cedarville of saying, "Not my backyard" when it comes to this whole sand mining thing. And I'm neutral on it, I really am, but to tell you the truth, town of Plymouth doesn't have a great tack, track record down here. We had the whole schoolhouse fiasco where money was being embezzled. It was attached to a Select Board member. There was a whole dredging thing that they were going to dump everything that was dredged out of Plymouth Harbor into this old Cedarville dump. So, these are some of the things that make us suspect down here in Cedarville. So when I hear that, you know, Cedarville needs to step up and not say, "Not my backyard", well, Cedarville people are just being a little bit cautious based on the track record. So anyways, that's my, my comments. I hope you take the consideration in next week when you talk to the School Committee to realize we haven't done what we need to do to raise the tax rate to afford what the School Committee is going to ask for. Thank you.
Thank you. Jade, is there anyone else wishing to, okay. Mr. Brandisi?
Okay, great, this, so I'd like to draw your attention to the big screen. That's just the first page of the second edition of the new Plymouth Magazine on the Move. This magazine was just released last week. You can find it on the town website and on all of our social media platforms. We have ordered approximately two hundred hard copies to be printed. Those will be distributed throughout the Cal, the library system, and here at Town Hall. So, again, always looking for feedback as to how we can make improvements, but the goal here is to communicate the work that is happening, how the tax dollars are being spent. There are two pages in this edition that go over the budget and encouraging folks from the public to be more involved in the budget process, as suggested by Selectman Canty. We will have a number of budget meetings, subcommittees are scheduled over the next week or so, and then there'll be a number of other meetings with the Finance Committee as a whole. So, there's the magazine, and let us know where else we can make improvements. I have a few other announcements this evening, so I'd like to announce that next Tuesday, January fourteenth, the Select Board will be honoring Representative Matthew Muratori for his ten years of service as a State Rep. That will take place, it will start at five P M. over at the eighteen forty-nine Courthouse entranceway. There'll be a social from five to six, and then at six o'clock, when the Select Board meeting begins, the formal event will take place. So, we're inviting the public, boards and committee members, elected officials, to thank Representative Muratori for his service to this community. I would like to also recognize Deputy Chief Greg Kane, who has recently retired on December twenty-seventh. Deputy Chief Kane served twenty-eight years to the Plymouth Fire Department, and so we appreciate everything that he has done for this community over the course of his career, and we wish him well in his retirement. Additionally, we recognized the Director of Assessing, Anne Dunn, when she presented the tax classification information at the hearing back in December. She's recently retired, and she had served almost thirty-seven years, thirty-six and a half years to the town of Plymouth. So, when you see somebody serve that many years in one community, you really have to appreciate the commitment they made to one community. I don't think we're going to see that anymore, especially, most folks leave after three or four years. So, again, appreciating Ms. Dunn and wishing her well in her retirement years as well. So Town Meeting had voted this past April to acquire the facility at twenty-two Mary B Lane, so this will be an adjunct to the existing DPW footprint. We are scheduled for closing on January twenty-ninth, and then thereafter, we'll be working with an engineering firm to design that facility so that we can move our administration and engineering staff into that building. So we're expecting the engineering and design work to take approximately six months, and we'll come back to Town Meeting for an appropriation. The park management plan, so as, you know, every summer, we hear from residents about Morton Park, Fresh Pond, and some of our beaches. And so, under the leadership of Commissioner Braddy, she has convened a group of town officials and others to participate in an exercise of developing a park management plan so that we can get a better grasp on how we manage these parks, both in the number of folks in attendance, how we manage the trash, how we manage the security. And what she also has done very uniquely, she has engaged Bridgewater State University. And so they have committed, as a capstone project this spring, to be a part of this committee so that they can do a financial analysis. So for the first time, we can get a, we can get an analysis of what it's costing our residents to manage these parks and these beaches, and then assign a number associated with that. So more to come on that, we're hoping to have the analysis and the plan itself complete before the speech season, so more to come. Although, we may get some weather, and we're monitoring the weather closely. Right now, we have scheduled a Christmas tree drop-off over at Camel Drive, the DPW facility, for both Saturday and Sunday, again, weather permitting. The Christmas tree drop-off will take place from eight A M. to two P M. So again, this Saturday and this Sunday, from eight A M. to two P M., you can drop off your Christmas trees over at Camel Drive, the DPW facility. Keep an eye out for our social media and for our website, because if we do get the snow that's being predicted, we'll probably cancel both of those days. Chief Foley this morning had reported they're doing their own data analytics, and they're going back ten years on call volume and other metrics. But just to share some of the, some of the data that they, that they're analyzing, the call volume over the last ten years has increased by forty percent for the fire department. That represents approximately thirteen thousand responses per year. So I'll say that again, so forty percent call volume for our fire department over the last ten years, so significant increase. I shared this one data point, the chief will be coming out with a full report, probably in the next few weeks, and so I'll share the full report when that's complete. But, you know, we're trying to look at data and help, and use data to help drive some of our decision-making, especially our deployment strategies. Those thirteen responses triggered nineteen thousand apparatus being deployed. So, getting heavy use out of our equipment. So again, more to come on that. I have a number of items I'd like to report coming out of the Police Department. So as you all know, last April, Town Meeting approved a crime analyst for the Police Department. That position, that person just started last week. So again, we've talked a lot about using data to drive some of our decision-making. For the first time, we're going to collect the data that's, we're going to analyze the data that's collected by the, by the Police Department and start to use that operationally and help the chief decide where to deploy his assets during certain times of year. So that's the primary focus of the crime analyst, so again, that position just started. We also had an appropriation last year through capital improvement for new firearms. Those firearms have been delivered and been inspected, and the transition will start in a week or so. And we'll take full days, two full days of training for all of our personnel. Body cameras, we've talked a lot about that over the past two years. All cameras and associated pieces have been delivered, and training will begin in February tenth for deploying of our body cameras. The chief has a new media team. This new media team will be working with Casey Kennedy, our Communications Coordinator, to help respond to inquiries from local media sources. We have a team of one lieutenant, three officers, and they plan to develop a communications strategy moving forward. And then last, an assessment center will be established for the deputy chief. So part of the chief's redeployment strategy of personnel, he plans to have one deputy chief and two captains, right now he has three captains, no deputy chief. So, again, that'll be one deputy chief and, and two captains, and we'll go through the civil service process on that. And so the last, and so just two more, actually one more chief update. We have nine new recruits that will start the academy this coming Monday. They expected to graduate in June, they have to go through a six-month FTO program. And the reason why I explain that timeline, because you can see it takes almost a year to get a recruit police officer through the academy, through training, before they can be deployed onto the streets. We've had a vacancy factor of twenty, about fifteen to twenty percent at times, and so that's been a struggle. And the chief is now working with the two unions to determine whether or not we collectively agree that we should stay in civil service, given the challenge it has been over the last five years to recruit new police officers. So last, I'll just end with the class, classification compensation study. Using Appadollars, we've identified a consultant who we will be working with. That contract's been executed, and so we hope to work with the unions and begin the class and comp study, which we're expecting to take anywhere from fourteen to eighteen months to complete. So pending any questions, that's all I have for this evening.
Any questions for Derek? Derek, I just have a few comments too. For Anne Dunn's job, do you, are you going to have, what's your plan for that? Is it somebody that can step up to that, or are you going to plan to advertise that?
Position's been advertised, there's been one round of interviews, we're scheduling a second round of interviews next week.
So you have applicants, so that's, that's good. And Sugar's job, I should say, that's his nickname. I just want to say that there was a knock on my office door, and it was Mr. Kane, we all call him Sugar. And he said, "You know, Dick, I just wanted to stop by and say thank you, and it's been great working with you," and he said, "Please don't leave." So, that meant a lot to me, and I apologize to him for not being there, because I had put it in my planner, but sometimes things don't go according to plan, but I was very touched, and he's just a classy guy that, not because of what he said to me, just, I've watched him over the years, you know, like a lot of the firefighters and police officers like Dana and all of them. And when they go up the ladder like that, and you're a part of the community, it makes you feel good. But it made me feel good too, that somebody in that rank, in that department, you know. And he said good things about the town, so. I said he'd be missed, I told him, "Come back, I'll buy him lunch," bring his wife, Susan. I know his wife because I went to school with her, so it was, you know, pretty good.
He's very touched by his farewell ceremony, so it was a great send-off.
Yeah, so I just wanted to touch on that. And then the other two things was, and I'm not sure if I'm even going to say this right, but years ago, we had a, when you remove gravel or sand, you paid so much a yard, and that money was to be, I believed, used to repair roads. I like to revisit that policy, the board, when I say "we," look it over, dig it out. And my suggestion probably without, before I even look at it, it needs to go up. And then what we could really use that for, and I think one of the ideas is water conservation. You know, we had a committee come in here, or a group, and they come in and they said, you know, "We want to implement this and that." And so we could take maybe some of these funds, but I'm open to, to all of us looking at it, and start conservation in our commercial buildings and helping these businesses and stuff do it, and, you know, setting the wave, I mean, I think there's no better way to offset it, you know, is, is to finding the funds. So I think first we need to look at it, I know it's quite old, and I'm sure it needs adjusting, but I think if it starts here, if it's under our purview, then we need to look at that and dig it out. And then the last thing was, I brought this up before, it's not a big deal, but my partner is very, you know, you need to talk to the town about the lights. I go, "Listen, we don't run the lights," you know. So is there any way, I mean, there's some lights, like on Court Street, that the wires are hanging out, they're not, you know, and it's been a while. So is it a department in our town that could go around and get? So is it a department in our town that could go around and get the numbers? I know we asked, you know, the residents to do it before, but, I mean, there's a lot of lights out. And, you know, I don't know if we can hold a check or what we have to do to get their attention, but they need to be fixed.
No, that's, that's, of everything you said, that's the more complicated one. Let me do some homework on that one.
I mean, I see what your suggestion is, but if we can have somebody out at night, or, you know, I know it's, everything's overtime, but I think it's a general safety thing that we really need to pay attention to. And that's all I have. Anything from anyone else? No? All right. New business? Mr. Mahoney?
Through the chair to the town manager. Back in December, I attended the Christmas tree lighting with Santa Claus down at the Little Red Schoolhouse in Cedarville. And I met Ms. Ferretti for the first time. And obviously, I think, I believe she is a born Select Board member, and she is the leader of the Herring Pond Tribe. And it was a busy occasion. You know, we had introductions. We really couldn't get into an in-depth conversation. But I did congratulate her on getting the status bestowed upon them by Governor Healy. But not now, Mr. Brandisi, but maybe in the next week or two. How does that affect the town? What does that designation do for those individuals down in Herring Pond? And, you know, how does that affect the town of Plymouth and... How does that whole thing work for us going forward? And for them? And I don't know if that entails, again, through the chair, having Ms. Ferretti come in if she so chooses to introduce herself, and, you know, what their expectations are, but I would have no problem with that.
Okay. I can follow.
Anything else on the new business? Letters? All business? All righty. Motion?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Thank you for watching. Have a nice week.